Good evening, welcome to the Town of Cisro Planning Board Meeting. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Chuck, would you lead us off, please?
I'd like to.
Thank you. First order of business is the approval of the August 6th Planning Board Minutes. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
It's a motion to approve.
Second? Jim?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yeah.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes for the minutes approval. Next, we'll open up the meeting to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the board on any active application, you may do so now. We do have two public hearings this evening, so if it's on one of those topics, please wait until we open the public hearing for that. So with that said, is there anybody here that would like to address the board? Given nobody's approach, we'll close the public input and move on to the first agenda item. This is a public hearing for the property at 9280 Bartell Road. This is a three lot minor subdivision.
Good evening, Tim Koyer. Same as what you've seen up previously. Property located on Bartell Road. Again, roughly 4.9 acres. Again, properties located on Bartell Road, roughly 4.9 acres. It's agricultural district. The existing parcel is this large square rectangular portion here. We're looking to carve off a lot, Lot 1 here, Lot 2, and then have a flag lot in the back, Lot 3 with a flag down here on, again, Bartell Road is here. There's an existing house here, an existing garage here that's going to go with Lot 2 where they're going to be building a new house. Pretty straightforward, all the lots meet code setbacks. The reason we did that little jog around the garage to make sure the side yard setbacks meet code for that garage. But pretty straightforward.
And the new map represents, uh, takes care of the comments Mark made?
Yep, we added the bulk regulations on the map and the one note about Lot 1 and 2 meet, uh, meet only the requirements for residential use.
Thank you. We'll open the questions from the planning board, Jim?
Um, so the narrow strip is so that Lot 3 has access?
Yep.
That's a private driveway.
That'll be a private driveway.
Okay. Alright, good.
Chuck?
I'm good also.
Mary, anything?
And Lot 3, what would be the plan?
Can you pull your microphone closer?
Yep, sorry, Lot 3, what would be the plans?
Uh, resident home, yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had.
Zach?
I'm all set, thank you.
As am I. Mike, anything?
I'm good.
All set.
Yeah? Mark? Well, then we'll open it to public comment. If there's anybody that would like to address the board on this particular agenda item, you can do so now, please.
Good evening, Judy Boyke, Muscat Bay. Just a question, with the separation of these three lots, to the left as we look at the screen, there's a large parcel that has an access, if you can see them, where there's no property on the main road of Bartell. I'm just curious, since that was supposed to be part of those other parcels, is that going, is that now designated as a separate lot? Or was that part of the main, the main property?
So you know we don't take questions, but I'll
I know, I just
To me, and I'll let Tim address.
Tim? Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong Judy, but you're talking about this property right here?
Yeah.
So this is a separate tax parcel over here. This is the existing tax parcel and this is a separate. This one's actually zoned, I think it's R10?
R15.
R15, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And this is agricultural somehow, that they actually are, were and are owned by the same owner. But nothing's happening with this parcel at this time. There is access onto Bartell Road, but because of the wetland situation, they don't have any plans for that.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the planning board on this particular agenda item? Given nobody's approach, we'll close the public comment section. Any questions or comments? Anybody? I'll make a motion for our standard seeker. Do we have a second?
Thanks.
Jim? Yes. Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes for the seeker. Neil, would you propose a motion for approval, please?
9280 Bartell Road, three lots. Full condition, condition on file one. The applicant is hereby advised that for issuance of section 185, sticks of section half of the code for the applicant has 90 days from the approval to file the map. If the applicant misses their 90 day filing deadline, the ship will expire. Two, next point from town code, the applicant will pay our fee for the amount of $5,000 in prior to signing of the map by the chairman. Lastly, the applicant furthered the other side of the chairman of planning board made delay signing of the final plan. Chairman verifies that the applicant has executed any and all necessary agreements with the town undertaking standards.
And would somebody like to make that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second the motion.
Jim?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes to the motion.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Have a good night. Next agenda item is the second public hearing for this evening, and this is for a minor subdivision as well, for the property at 9520 Simpson Road.
Yep, and I gave one to the, to the engineer who's looked at it already. Yep. That's the thing, they didn't know already. Okay. It's up.
Believe the maps have been handed out. This is our lot that we are looking to subdivide to break off that one piece that says Lot 21. And I believe that it conforms to all requirements.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board? Jim?
I'm good.
Chuck?
I'm good.
Mary?
I'm good.
Zach?
All set.
I'm all set. Michael?
All sets.
Steve, anything?
Yep, Mr. Tizavanas has provided the new maps with the comments Mark had asked for, and I've provided it to Mark and he's taking a look at it.
You've looked at them all? Thank you. Neil? Mark? I'll make a motion for our standard seeker. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Jim?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes to the seeker. Seeker passes. Neil, would you propose a?
You don't open the public hearing?
Oh! We'll open the, uh, agenda item up to public comment. If there's anybody here that would like to address the board on this particular subject, you may do so now. You do? Sure, please come up.
Me again. I'm familiar with this property, obviously, because of my real estate business. The property line that shows that it cuts through a lot at the, at the road's edge. Is that what they're determining as one of the lots? Separation of it? You can see where it's, it's a square right next to the, um,
Here? Right here.
Right there.
I'm thinking this is the property line.
That's the property line. Well then, what's, what's happening with the dotted line?
The dotted, can I respond to that?
Yeah.
The dotted line is a previous property line that we have changed, that has been changed.
With the owner that lives next door?
Yes.
Because I sold that property. Just checking, thank you.
Any other comment? With that, we'll close the public comment. And Neil, would you propose a motion for approval, please?
Yes. Based on my subdivision, preliminary final plan, how much risk? 50 years to 95, 20 Simpson Road, two lots, this is physical condition on file and comes out, but I advise that for issuance of sub, for the section 185, which is objection after the code, the applicant has 90 days from the approval filed the map. If the applicant misses the 90 day filing deadline, this approval will have expired too. Eventually down code, the applicant will pay our fee, the amount of $2,500, our heads of signing on the map by the chairman. And lastly, the applicant has, we're being notified that the chairman of planning board made delay signing of the final plan until the chairman verifies that the applicant has executed any and all necessary agreements with the town and any and all securities are in place.
Thank you. Would somebody like to make that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes. You're all set. Thank you. Move on to the third agenda item. This is for a site plan continuation for custom truck, one source at 6177 South Bay Road. Good evening, welcome back.
Good evening. Thank you. Greg Scorma, representing custom trucks. We, uh, I believe we, uh, were able to answer the questions that the town had. The plan, we've, we've been working kind of with the owner and the tenants and the other tenants to make modifications that everybody could agree on. I think the stuff that we have on there, uh, pretty much meets a sort of what the board was looking for. And if there's other comments or additional stuff, then, you know, please let us know. If you want me to go through some of the changes that we've made, I'd be happy to.
Please do.
So we increased the green area along the building. There was some green area that was added as part of the, I believe, a Main Street grant that we utilized to revamp the facade of both of the buildings. And so we've extended that a little bit and made it a little bit bigger. The county came back with a comment that they wanted the parking out of the right of way, so we took that parking out. Extended that green space there, made it larger. And planted trees along the front that I believe meet the spacing requirements for the town. Their combination of some ornamental trees underneath the power lines and some high locusts, that sort of thing, along some of the edges that they would be a little bit bigger. Along the building, there's a combination of some shorter shrubs and then along the fence line where we're proposing to utilize for dumpsters, we've got some, uh, some arborvitae plant for that to kind of shield it from the road, that sort of thing. The pavement in the front will be where you see a darker pavement, that's all new asphalt. Either moving some deficient asphalt and also paving some of the areas that were stone. The access from, uh, the northernmost driveway onto the parking area was taken out and that's now going to be landscaped and planted with grass. We cannot get rid of that driveway for a couple of reasons. One is neighbors to north have access easements to it. The, uh, the other reason is that it needs to have a secondary access for fire to the back. What I can deduce from the code and also, um, circulation of some of the, uh, larger vehicles that come through, although rare, but they, they do have some of these decent sized cranes that that come in and those are much easier to maneuver that road. So as part of that, we're proposing to pave the apron area adjacent to the road and bring that into, uh, under kind of DOT conformance. We've, uh, we've labeled the parking. The parking up front is, uh, custom parking. There's more than enough for what they need. They park all their, uh, employees inside the fence, so we designated a real parking along, uh, parallel to the building along the southern side of their fence line. For 20 vehicles, if that's the projection of maximum employment that they're going to have at the site. You know, if they add a couple more, we could stripe a couple more spaces, plenty of room there. They did freshen up all of the, uh, stone parking area. Spent $40,000 worth of stone. Including the driveway entrance along the side there, they, they spruced that up, but, you know, beefed it up a little bit with fresh stone. So the striping will be, all those spots will be striped in the front. The parking for the trucks were not striped and we're kind of showing you kind of the massing of it because they just kind of move around. They have different combinations of vehicles on site. They will not be parking any vehicles in front of building. The one vehicle that was parked in front of the building the last time was actually for the tenant to the, the southernmost tenant. It was one of their trucks. But they don't, they do not park any. They, they just flat out from a company policy, everything needs to be fenced in area. These are, a lot of these are very expensive, 300, 400 plus thousand dollar trucks and they don't like them outside of fenced areas.
Sure.
I think I covered pretty much everything. Be happy to answer any other questions that may have come up.
We'll open the questions, Jim?
So, part of it's going to be paved and the rest is stolen?
Same as, pretty much the same as it's currently. There is some paved area at the north. You kind of see it as a, um, in that area, it's more of like a nicer looking gray. nicer, it's more even. So, uh, from the front of the building to about two thirds of the way back is paved. The rest of it has historically always been gravel. And that's, that's what they're planning on leaving there. It's not a highly traveled area, so it's not like it's, you know, travel a lot. It actually has a little more permeability than asphalt. So it's better in that respect. Everything in the front is paved. And the one area that was in bad shape is, uh, the area there is in darker, darker gray and that'll probably be kind of like, you know, crumbled asphalt.
Did you say probably be paved?
No, no, it will be, it will be paved. It was, it was more like crumbled asphalt. You know, they turned back to, uh, grain.
I'm good. Chuck?
Uh, it's curious, then, estimate how many big machines they would be parking outside at a time?
I think
The less the better for rental, but
Yeah, they're, and they're long term. It's not like they're coming in and out every day. But I, I think the rest of it was 70, if I remember right. We had it in, in the original letter. And, uh, and, you know, they come and they go, but when they go, they go for months. And when they come back, they spend about a week getting reconditioned, everything from
It's all done on site?
It's all done on site. That's, that's what happens inside that building there. They've got different bays. That's what those 20 employees do. They, they basically go through everything on that truck, on the oils and filters and you know, clean them up, anything that's, you know, flaps, uh, you know, if you go through a storage room, you see basically just about anything that, you know, can wear and tear on a truck and and that sort of thing. And then the other thing that they need to, need that access for is kind of UPS and FedEx type delivery trucks. Because that's about all they have.
As far as the maintenance and oil changes, the federal requirements for, you know, filtering and disposing, you know, has to be handled.
Yeah, there's no, no more the old days where, you know, you put it down a, a drain that went to the ground. We, we did a few environmental studies on some of those, which are not, not pretty. So no, every, everything gets, you know, properly disposed of from the site for that sort of thing.
And what, what lands are?
What lands are up to the north?
I was like
Definitely, we're not even in the buffer, I don't think.
Yeah, you know, you know that
And we're not making, we're not expanding. That, definitely nothing in the front.
Okay, that's the way it was.
Yeah.
Yeah. You have any graphics on your signage, the way it's going to look?
I haven't even seen the signage. All I know is it, it's part of a separate application. I don't know if they've submitted it yet, no?
No.
They, they will be. I don't think signage is that important to them.
Okay, that's curious.
You know, it's not like, oh, look, there's a custom truck place in Detroit. But I think they are going to, you know, they are coming in with a separate application. I just really have not seen it.
And last
That'll be handled through Steve's office.
Right?
That'll be handled through Steve's office.
Absolutely. And lastly, uh, mention on the power line. I know across the road, there was big issues about letting activity go on under the power line with the high equipment and stuff.
Yeah, there's, there's no real high equipment, um, going on. I mean, it's, it's, it's trucks. But I mean, it's been going, it has been going on for probably about 40 plus years, I would imagine, as long as I can remember anyways. It came up as a county comment. I don't know why the county is weighing in on something that's more of a site plan, you know, it's not a countywide or county impact issue. I did mention to the owners and they're going through, looking at the deeds and buying easements. It did come up way back at closing when they purchased it and, and because the bank and the title company wanted to know about it, so it is clear, but they're just trying to find the, the stuff to to give me to hand in to you guys.
I'm just thinking across the road, the gas station had pumping problems, trying, trying to, you know, get their okay to work under it. And I'm just curious if that carried across the road.
I, I could see that. We, we've done numerous national grid crossings with lines like this. Their typical concern is how tall is truck going to be, you know, is it close to a low point of our power lines? Because some of them are low enough that interferes. But in every case we've done it, it's, it's worked out fine. I would imagine if they had a problem with this, the National Grid would have brought it up a long, long time ago. And the only thing we're really adding is, I think there's some like, they're probably like apple, you know, crab apple, they're little, uh, ornamental apple trees or something. That's the tallest thing that's, we're changing and if anything, we're taking out some of the access that would be going. I'd be happy with.
That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Thank you for adding all the landscaping and the green area.
Should look much nicer.
I can't wait to see what it looks like in the end. I wrote down last time, there's minor building changes. Can you just remind us what's going to be changed in the building?
In talking to them, there, there really isn't any changes. They changed, they changed the fence in the front, which I kind of said, look, you can't do that. You gotta stop. You know, but they do a nice job. I mean, they're, they're very, you know, they're okay with the landscaping, they're okay with the changes. They just want to get, they just, they want to make sure the town's not angry at them, you know what I'm saying? Because they came in thinking that there was no big deal, you know, and, you know, they're, they're nice people, they're from Kansas. They, they can't understand, you know, why it's taking so long and that sort of thing. You know, but when he changed the fence, I said, you gotta please stop, just, you know, let me, let me just get through the process. So that was really the main thing that they wanted to change was, and it was, it's too tight of an access to come in there. I think, you know, this way here, it's a much smoother access. Like I said, the, the back, the back entrance, they've got, I think I showed you guys some pictures last time. Like these cranes are still on, they're still highway transport, you know, they drive themselves on the highway. They're not anything super massive, but the turn radiuses on them is a little different. You know, they don't want to drive them all over the park. I come in and get out. So no, as far as the building, there, there's no lighting changes. You know, I think the, there's a lot of major improvements. Building definitely looks nicer now than it did
Right.
five years ago. So I think some of those are nicer improvements. Other than that, no, they're not really planning on making any change.
Okay, thank you.
At least not externally. I mean internally, I think they're, you know, they were, they were laying different, you know, work areas out and different internal lifts and, you know, small cranes to work in trucks, but that's about it.
Alright, that's all.
Thank you. Zach?
So you, you said no exterior changes?
No.
No paint, no upgrades?
No, the, the building was painted. I mean, I, I looked at historic, I mean, it was, you know, it looks a lot nicer. You know, before it was stained, it was, you know, it had been kind of worn. Didn't have the, the nice stone in the front of it. I mean, I think for, you know, for being a building of what kind of building it is, I think it's a much, much improved from what it was. But I don't, I don't think there's a, I don't know what else we would do, to be honest, do you?
Okay, thank you. All set.
So the, um, the access driveway that you talked about, what type of use is going to happen there?
The, the driveway to the north?
For the emergency, and then you said?
They envisioned the dumpster trucks coming in that way. Picking up and then coming out the front. They, they just, they don't like their, they don't like any trucks or any vehicles in their other fields where they are, their other cars are. They don't like them, you know, if they could come in and then turn around and back up and that sort of thing. They seem to be very nervous about vehicles coming in and, and doing any kind of major maneuver. So the, the dumpster trucks would come in that way. FedEx and UPS would probably come in that way. It's just because there's storerooms on that side there. And some of, possibly some of larger equipment that's just easier to maneuver that way than to, than to zigzag through the front of the site.
Yeah, and I understand that. My only concern is in utilizing that, they're going to potentially bring some dirt onto the road. And I know we've got a 31 foot apron there.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we it's stone, you know, they, they're refreshing the stone to be paved.
So the apron?
Yep, the darker, the darker gray.
Yeah, I know, what, what's here? Stone?
Stone, yeah.
Mark, should the apron be longer, do you think, 31 feet? I thought so too. Yeah, so we're going to want 50 there and not stone and dirt on the sides of it. So that they stay on the apron.
Yep, we can do that.
Where is it now?
It's 31 and a half feet.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. That's, that's, that's perfectly fine. I'll have, what I'll do is I'll have them plant grass on both sides of that best I can. I don't know, I don't know what kind of drainage there is there, but I'll make it, make sure it's defined and not stone and not, not wider. We're going to have to go through the county for DOT permit to, to do it anyway, so it's going to be to their standards, but yeah, that's fine.
Alright.
It's very reasonable.
Mike?
We're good.
Steve?
All set.
Yeah?
So my hearing on that, we're going to extend it to 50 feet.
And, and grass on the sides of it?
That's, and not stone.
Not stone. Mark?
All set.
I'll make a motion for our standard seeker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yeah.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes for the seeker. Neil, would you make a motion for approval as discussed, please?
177 South Bay Road, the proposed medical truck. The whole version of the code is the first year, this equivalent is the decision on file one. Policy rendering general, this is the applicant's plan board in regard to the test. We incorporated our reference into this site and the placement of order approval there according to the medical size of my substantial concern. He has that to run with Iran. Two, the entrance aprons will be paved and expanded to 50 feet of grass on the sides of the proposed system.
And would somebody like to make that a motion? I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
You as well.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is for, uh, sketch plan review. This is for the property at 7848 Northern Boulevard, a proposed fire apparatus, sales and service business. You up again here? No?
For here, four.
Somebody here that can make a presentation on what you're Oh, he is. We can, we can move on to, is he on his way?
Oh, Bill, I talked to Bill 15 minutes ago, he's out here.
We'll, we'll go to the next agenda item. That's alright. So the next agenda item is also a sketch plan review. This is for a proposed storage garage at the Cisro Police Department at 6200 State Route 31. Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening, how's everybody doing in there?
We want to thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Steve Amiat, Cisro Police Department. We got a rant, um, it's probably been about two years ago now from Senator Mannion to build this, uh, storage, uh, full barn on the same property as the police department. We need it for, um, evidence vehicles that we get. Sometimes we get more than one evidence vehicle. Evidence is stuff that we want it to succeed in court, so we need to make sure it's kept very secure. We also have a bunch of trailers that we store things in and we've had to ask other, uh, mainly fire departments to even store it there during the winter to keep everything nice. So I have Jeremy here So I have, uh, Jeremy here from, uh, Morton Building that can tell you more about.
Good evening. So, what they're looking to do is, uh, forty-two by forty-eight porch facility is by, uh, post-framed structure. You don't put wood in the ground, it's concrete, most of the ground, four feet. But if it's teething, you know, and that just, you know, through just standard full barn buildings. Pretty straightforward, uh, everything is, is stuff on the easements. What they're planning to do, we should go have concrete inside. Uh, doing any kind of fighting on the sides to disrupt any of the neighbors or-
Thank you. We'll open with questions, Jim?
No windows? And one man door?
I'm good.
Just the one man door on the one-
One side?
Nope, and there's, um, a separate exit on the far end.
The other side?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I see it, and the others.
One man door on, on each end, I should-
Rendering.
Yeah, I'm good.
Good. Chuck?
Um, you say it's, what, forty-five by forty-five-ish?
Forty-two wide, um, with the eaves, it'll probably be closer to forty-four.
And this is a wood structure, isn't it?
Uh, yes, we are wood structured inside with steel roof and wall. But the whole framing of it is wood structured.
Is this, uh, all the, uh, overhead doors are same size as normal size, or are they a little larger?
They are. I apologize, I have six buildings done at the same time. These are ten by ten doors, I believe. Yeah, they're, they're a little bit bigger, so they can, uh, accommodate-
Okay, that was the way I asked, yes.
Yep.
Possibility, how, how easily or tough is it to see this from the road, thirty-one?
It's a pretty decent sized building, but it's block, it's the same width, um, existing building that's there. So it's just kinda, it's twenty feet out from that, so extend it over. Bring the bank on one side and it sets back on the property, so, I mean, it, it, it'll be site from Sandra Road.
But not from thirty-one so much. Okay. Only reason I ask is, uh, normally in, on these plain buildings, we ask for, uh, a little dressing up to some degree.
Sure.
But, uh, if you don't see it.
Yeah, there's, you're really not gonna see much of it, no, unless you're in the bank parking lot or coming down Sandra and we try, it'll be all trimmed out. To match the roof and it's got Wayne's coat, so it'll be too long. I believe they picked out, uh, a tan and a brown.
I know you guys been doing this for a long time and see them all around, uh, central New York, how many?
Hundred and twenty-three years.
It's getting warmed up.
That's it.
That's fine, thank you.
Mary?
So you said there's no lighting, aren't we required to have lighting by doors?
There would, yeah, there was gonna probably be required lighting by the man doors, yep. But it would just be like a residential-
Yeah, not show like floodlights or anything, that. It is gonna have electric and, uh, lighting inside, so-
Inside, but on the outside too, just for safety reasons?
The man doors.
And will there be security, for the building?
A secured, secured fenced area.
But the building will have the security?
Yeah, it, there'll be security, like I said, we could store, uh, evidence vehicle in there, so that's gonna have to be, be locked.
I would think.
As far as lighting too, is, is there a lamppost still on the site, there in the parking lot, there used to be a whole light?
Yeah, there is a-
Yeah, it'd be right behind the building now, right?
Yeah.
It's so, there's no plans for landscaping around the?
It's, I mean, it's, it's all blacktop now and it's gonna be blacktop around here.
Oh, it's all blacktop?
Uh, it's, currently they're using-
Like grass?
I, our computer system, I apologize.
Going in an existing part of the lot.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I had.
Zach?
I'm all set, thank you.
For parking, um, you know, I looked at an aerial and looked down, it looks like this building's gonna take about sixteen spots. You've done numbers and you're comfortable with the available parking that will be there afterwards? Oh, the evidence is going to be- So we have, uh, standards now that we have to comply with, have you considered doing any landscaping along Sandra and maybe a little bit along thirty-one? Some trees and that kind of thing, I think we would like to, I would like to see that. To meet our, our guidelines with, uh, architectural standards that we have in place now.
Yeah, we, I'm not, I'm not familiar with standards you're talking about, I mean, they've ripped up our problem about a hundred times with doing this.
Yeah, you might wanna wait on the front part then.
Yeah. The only part weird disturbing is just the-
We look at the entire site, that's one of the things that we do when an existing structure comes in, you know, that's got a structure on it already. We look at the entire site and we have standards now that have to be complied with. And, and Mark can do a review, right? We'll do a review in architectural standard with it, we'll probably be looking for some landscaping along there.
Yeah, we'll definitely get some.
That's all I have, Mike.
Um, how far is it from the other building? It's twenty feet?
Steve?
I'm good for now, thanks.
Neil, anything at this point? Mark?
Uh, yeah, so.
Terrific. So, you'll get a review letter from Mark and then we'll get together again and move forward.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Still not here?
No, I'm good, I thought it was good.
No, of course. Good evening.
Good evening.
Go ahead. Hi, John.
I'm the listing broker for the property, um, represent Bob and AJ Martino, the landlord. Doing a medium site plan application, I believe. My name, I'm sorry, thanks.
Talk about what's, what's happening and what you're gonna be doing there.
Yep, so, uh, what we're doing is, uh, Ken Fink, owner of Premier Fire Apparatus, uh, he's looking to lease the building. We're not changing anything with the site. We're looking to add a fence, as you'll see on the site plan, with a electronic gate, um, right there as a kind of parking lot curves. And then basically slapping his sign in the existing framed sign box there, I mean, that's the extent of our modifications to the property, um, that obviously depends business.
What happens on the site?
Uh, it's fire apparatus, so they're heavy duty fire trucks, uh, service, sell, uh, repair.
I looked at your website and it showed an aerial of a spot, I don't remember where it was. It had a lot of fire trucks in the lot.
Yeah, that was a staging photo, I think it was just a way to kind of show their, you know, what they do and whatnot. This site in particular, um, at any given point, it's gonna be four to six fire trucks, and that's including fire trucks parked potentially in the warehouse.
In the warehouse. So you're comfortable with the, the availability of parking?
Yep.
Okay. Open with questions? Jim?
Okay, so all the big rocks and all that would stay?
Those are all staying, yep, not changing any of the landscaping.
It would be nice to see some added.
Some landscaping.
Some landscaping.
Yeah, I guess, could you-
Again, we have, we have new standards now that you're gonna wanna get a copy of.
Okay.
Take a look at those.
Okay.
Do they have them already?
I believe so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can, we can look at it again if we don't have it, but we probably do.
And you put a sign where the sign was?
We haven't yet, but the plan would be the exact, uh, frame that's on the front of the building now, uh, can, I mean, we still have the old sign from CNY Fire Restoration. Probably just put vinyl over the top of that or just get a new piece of aluminum and place it in there, but the dimensions, everything's staying the same. I think we did provide a mockup of just a rough idea of what his logo would look like on that sign.
And the fence, what is that, is there a dumpster behind that or?
Which, the proposed one or the? Nope, that's for the propane thing?
Yeah, the existing thing, yes.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have for Ray.
Thank you. Chuck?
Well, it'd be nice to see some activity there again.
Yeah.
And, uh, even though the previous, uh, business was, uh, need all these improvements, it made a big difference in the look of that, the way that was originally.
It's a gorgeous building, and I think it shows really well, and I agree with you, I, I, as being a real estate broker, I hate seeing nice buildings sit vacant, so.
Back to location, location, right?
Yeah, exactly, that's, that's been the selling point here is location.
It's pretty straightforward, the, the, uh, improvements you're doing is very good. Your business is on the idea of Jerome's? The same as Jerome's, uh, fire equipment?
Yes.
Okay, same idea? Yeah, I'm all set, that looks great to me.
Thank you.
Mary?
Uh, I would just like to see landscaping, everything else looks good to me too.
Zach?
I'm all set, thank you.
I am as well, Mike?
All set.
Steve?
Um, I, I think you're gonna, uh, hear from Paul and Urts this evening, uh, about, uh, the fire department's, um, uh, comments about the site. I know, the one that came through before, there were comments previously, there's no water, you know, there's no fire, uh, the, the, the building is on, be well, so there's no hydrants nearby. The change of use is a repair garage is, it, it, based on the size of the, the warehouse and the entire building for that matter, cause they're unseparated, mixed uses. Likely, the fire, uh, sprinklers are gonna be required, uh, for that, so.
Paul, you wanna go up now? Good evening.
Evening, Paul, it's from the North Syracuse Fire Department, Steve stole my thunder. The warehouse is roughly six thousand square feet, which makes it, um, the code requires it to be sprinkled. There, as we know from other developments on Northern Boulevard, there is no water distribution system there, there are no fire hydrants on Northern Boulevard. The closest fire hydrant is in front of Believers Chapel, and that's eleven hundred feet away. The next closest is sixteen hundred feet away on Topman Road. So, there's a significant, uh, fire suppression portion of this development that is gonna be difficult to overcome, I think, but I'm not an engineer.
Interesting.
You remember the, uh, Milton Cat, they installed a huge storage tank so that they could pump to their sprinkler system. You know, those are all possibilities, but again, I'm not an engineer.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Yep, have a good evening.
You as well. So, obviously the concerns of the fire department are gonna have to be addressed. Mark, will you have those in your?
Yeah.
Review letter? So that'll be part of the review letter that you get from our engineer. Yeah. Mark?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good.
So we're all set for now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, what, what's the average, where fire hydrants are supposed to be distance wise, is there any set?
Mm-hmm, yeah, four hundred feet from a sprinkler bill.
Four, okay, well, these are three times that, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It doesn't have a sprinkler system?
That concludes our agenda items, is there any, any questions or comments from the team? Do we have a motion to adjourn?